Call to order of the public hearing at 6:00 PM, August 13, 904. Orders to be read by the town board at this time.
Orders 13904, authorizing the issuance of $3 million, $500,000 tax deductible DEQ.
Mr. West, the town spoke on it, if you want to just bring them again.
This is actually a notice of intention to issue of the town in here to that loan, Louisiana Department of Quality for improvements to water system, consumer system. I don't know if the engineers here, but descriptions of project, basically we're upgrading the water and consumer lines of the town and also installing new water meters which will have leak detection capabilities also. It's a $3 million, $500,000 loan for DEQ. Given that it's a state loan, it'll be a very low interest rate, less than 1%, 0.95% interest, and $1 million of that $3 million, $5 million will be forgiven over time. So, the town, even though it borrowed $3 million, $5 million, will only repay $2 million, $5 million. So, it's basically a built-in $1 million grant towards that project. We anticipate, the orders was to be adopted by DEQ, need some additional information for them to finally approve the loan and have funds available, so we'll delay the actual adoption of the orders until next time when DEQ gives us the green light. But right now, part of what DEQ requires is a notice of intention at town meeting to just let everybody know that the state is making these dollars available to the town and basically to ask if they're, if you're just giving kind of feedback or questions, answers, your perspective at the moment. But this time, that's what this notice of intention hearing is for, if anybody has any questions, just, I can answer any question you may be doing about the finances, know a little bit about the project, but if anybody has any questions at this time, raise up the ready to access questions. If there being no questions, we can go ahead and without any additional comment, we can close the hearing.
Motion to adjourn, public hearing. Orders 13904, moved by Councilwoman Jenkins, second. Second by Councilwoman Sanford. All in favor, state by saying aye. Any opposed? So, we're hearing. You have all the proper documents signed?
Yeah. I'd say we're, you know, when you go to the adoption of the orders.
Call to order, council regular meeting of the mayor's board select on April 1st, 2013. We have a roll call. Councilwoman Elizabeth J. district one. As the record reflects, she is not present. Councilwoman microwave, district two.
Present.
Councilwoman Ellen McCalvin, district three.
Present.
Councilwoman Collette Sanford, district four.
Present.
Councilwoman Patricia Jenkins, district five.
Present.
Also, we have President Lisa Foster, town clerk. Chinonia Harris, town treasurer. Lee Wells, public work supervisor. And also Walter Young, public work supervisor, city attorney. Marcus Patullo, and Chief Police, Russell Mills. And our official journal, Hanesman News, Jackie Roberts. Motion to approve March 2nd, March 4th, and March 18th minutes. Have you reviewed those minutes, have any comments, corrections? If so, we can review at this time.
I second it.
Moved by Councilwoman Wade, second by Councilwoman Jenkins, for March 2nd, 4th, and 18th minutes. All in favor, state by saying aye. Any opposed? If there are none, the motion carries. At this time, we have presentations, and we're going to move, for the interest of time, we're going to look some items up on their agenda. And we're going to table some items on their agenda until next, Mr. Sheffield, you say next week, or are you going to let me know when the items you want to table?
On the orders just now, I'm hoping that we'll be able to proceed next month. Basically, DEQ has to approve a loan, actually we give us final approval loans, we can put the final terms in the documents. Otherwise, if we adopted it tonight, we could be amended it, that it went later day, so we might as well just go anyway until they get a final approval.
Okay. I will, okay. Haven't gotten it yet, but soon as I get it, I'm going to put the items in.
We expect approval, they've got an approval law, they just make it up. Take one more time.
Thank you, sir. At this time, we have presentations to be made. The first one is our annual presentation. Councilwoman Jenkins will join me right up front to make this annual presentation to the Homer baseball program, Mr. Carter. Jackie, we can a picture? This is our annual donation to the Homer baseball program in the amount of $3,000 from the town.
Mr. Carter can better describe what he can do with this fund after we give it to him, but we don't have a big check.
We are, as you may know, baseball season is upon us, spring is in the air, and softball, baseball programs in Claymore Parish are kicking off. We have about 400 kids that we run through our program, both ages, from ages four all the way up to 15 and 16 years old. What this money does, this is the town's way of helping us fund our program, equipment, needs, umpiring for the year, concession stands just don't pay for enough of it, and we always hold two or three tournaments a year, but it is just such an expensive proposition with insurance costs and things of that nature and uniforms. We don't deny any child the ability to play because they can't afford the $50 initiation fee that we have for our program, so we really thank the town and their commitment to our baseball softball program. We're going to be starting up about the middle of April, and we'll be going through about the middle of June, every Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday night, and then some on the weekend. So, if you're interested, if you come down to the ballpark, it's always a great night out there, come have a snow cone with us, we'd love to see you out there. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Next, we have another worthy recipient, the boys and girls club of Timber Ridge or Claymore, Ms. Adams alone. What you come for? Ms. Riddick, would you like to come with you?
Ms. Jackson.
Ms. Jackson, oh. This is our quarterly donation to the boys and girls club, $2,500 a month. And both of these funds, I would like to let everybody know, are taken from the recreational department, what the taxes passed for, to help fund these projects in our community. Thank you. You're welcome.
Did you say $2,500 a month to the boys and girls?
$2,500 a quarter.
A quarter, okay.
And that's been standard for the last, how many years? How many years long have you been receiving?
Probably what, 10, 15?
10, 15.
It's almost since it's run.
Yes.
And those funds, as I say, are coming from the recreational department. Last, I have one presentation to make. On February 13th, the town home was presented a resolution to a lady that has graced us for 90 years as a supporter of this town and live here, and we had a resolution that we presented at her birthday party, but we forgot to take the plaque. So, it's a council meeting today, Ms. Jackson, I wanted to give you your plaque today because I left the plaque in my office when I read the resolution for the town. So, I wanted to present this to you, present to the face of you, Ms. Jackson, one of you 90 years of life and legacy leadership as a businesswoman, citizen rights, and community leader, April the 1st, 2013, of the town Homer mayor board select. Now, thank our next recreational meeting, the garden recreation department is slated for April the 4th. Here in City Hall, the auditorium, do you want to know what's going on with the recreational department? Have any questions or concerns, please, we hear April 4th, 16:00. Next, we have our recreational department update, just to mention some ongoing activities provided. The town Homer chapter of the Club Scouts of America continues to grow, and they meet here at City Hall twice a month. Also, the Scorpion Life Jazzercise continues to meet three nights, three times a week at City Hall, Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday night at 6:00 PM. And there are currently 68 visiting participants. Many participants continue to send their thanks to the mayor and the council of why this serves. Also, we spoke about some of the ongoing activities with the recreational department. Also, the recreational department is helping the Homer high base coach and principal expressing their needs. Upcoming events, Attorney Hallman just spoke of one, Dixie League at the park. Also, Homer has a coed softball, Women's League, adult basketball pitch has been announced, and we begin activities at Mayfield Park. And on May the 3rd, the mayor's senior citizens appreciation day, it's May the 3rd, 2013, it begins here at City Hall, it's an annual event, this will be our third year, here at City Hall at 10:00 AM, it's dedicated for senior citizens. You come out, have your blood pressure checked, diabetes checked. We have several people to come and just tell us about the safety of our homes. Sheriff is one of our participants, area David Raines, Homer Memorial Hospital. And they come, they give us a lot of the tips, and then after that, we go to the park, Mayfield Park, the recreation, up on which you ride four wheelers, senior citizens ride four wheelers, that's something nice to see, trail rides and different things. This is an annual event, it begins at 10:00 AM, May 3rd, it's a Thursday, Friday. Right. And it ends around 2:00 or 3:00 PM, so we're taking all of our here that day, if you want to come out, if you want to participate in the event. Also, on May, Mayfield Pool will open in early summer, future details will be released at that time in your local newspapers. A planned collaboration with the Claymore Parish School Board to expand on the safe routes to school program, and the town Homer grants committee to seek council approval then, when preparations are complete. And we continue to do the groundwork at the Joe Michael Memorial Park. We're going to establish organized activities utilizing the trails and the trails at Mayfield Park. And we're going to review a long-term plan for the recreation for the Homer auditorium, the Homer hospital for workout and therapeutic space. And all this is presented by Chairman Patricia Jenkins, Councilwoman District 5, for the Recreation Committee. If you want to know further details by anything on this list, please be here April 4th at 6:00 PM in the auditorium. In the interest of time, I'm going to move up the grant committee's proposal, because they asked me to before we prolong any further. So, we under, I'm going to come back to public comments, and item A, and item C, and item D, and I'm going to take care of item B and F quite quickly.
Mayor, town council, I'm here representing the grant committee, and my grant committee people that are here will please stand, Tony Johnson, Ms. Jackson, Mr. Dickerson, and Ms. Jenkins, and of course, Don McCalvin, and yourself, and Lisa are the ones that are on that committee. And it's our unanimous recommendation that the town council authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with Baylor Engineering to seek funds to redo the portable drinking water lines. As I understand it, the project that we're talking about is to, a lot of lines now there, and I think Walter Young sitting back there can verify this, Walter, and he said, how many leaks y'all have in your lines per month now?
Well, we have maybe five, six.
Five, six. And when they redid a similar project to this and billion, they're down to now maybe one leak or break about every two months. And so, once this would be accomplished, it would save the town substantial money on repairs, as well as be delivering to people better quality drinking water type thing. And so, in order to do that, the, there's some preliminary figures and about 13 different reports, a number of reports, we'll just say it that way, with EPA and other agencies that have to be filled out in order to get a preliminary approval on this grant from USDA. And my, the general understanding of the information that we've gotten is if we're going to proceed with this as soon as possible, that they may be able to grant about 45% of it, and that the part that we do have to pay back, which would be the 55%, would be found in somewhere in the neighborhood of 3%, is that what you probably could be with those figures, something, which seems to be quite favorable. But, it's the remaining thing with the DEQ grant, we should have our sewer system and sewer plant, and the new water meters, and the gray water out of the dive force and ball park, so we should be kind of having that in an optimal situation as soon as that grant's implemented. My understanding from DE, from Baylor is that they'll have these figures all together, hopefully in two, USDA in six months, and hopefully the grant would be, project would be completed within two years to two and a half years. And so, that's our recommendation to, I think y'all have a copy of the resolution, which is 13 days, 003, for 2003. If anybody has any questions I'll answer, I bet I can.
Any questions regarding projects for USDA, recommending, recommending announcements by the grant committee?
That's correct.
Any questions, council? Okay, I'm going to have Lisa read resolution 13-003, 2013.
Resolution 13-003, whereas the town of Homer, Louisiana is in need of water supply at which to be keeping some ingredients, whereas lots in France, this park may be available to USDA, now therefore, being resolved by the board of the town of Homer, Louisiana, the mayor is hereby authorized to submit application for funding, preliminary engineering report, environmental, and related documents to USDA. The mayor is further authorized to retire the services available or associates and subsequent engineers to refer to the above referenced documents in accordance with USDA guidelines and furnished engineering sign related services on seek to a funding committee for USDA. The mayor is further authorized to harness such additional information as may be reasonable but be requested in connection with the application for funding. The mayor is hereby designated as the official senior board for the town of Homer, has authorized the signing of funding application and any other documents related to the application.
No other questions, I'll entertain a motion.
To adopt resolution 13-003. So, moved by Councilwoman Wade, second. Second by Councilwoman Sanford. All in favor, state by saying aye. Any opposed? So, it's a two minutes. Thank you, Mr. Carter.
Thank you.
And we appreciate all that the grant committee does to assist in town Homer, bringing us grants and meeting monthly.
It takes the cooperation of the town council and the mayor to make these things happen.
I do appreciate it.
As well as the other departments supporting it, it's all him working.
Thank you so much. Item A for this town to discuss former housing authority pilot taxes. This article here.
Hello, mayor and council. I don't know if you want me to read this long little report I have for you.
You can just sum it up for me.
Okay, in summary, the housing authority has 100 units, and right now, we have 93 rented, five vacant, and two offline. We currently have an operating subsidy grant and two CFP bonds, the 2011 and the 12 is open. We have a 5, 2013 CFP bond. I have a check for the pilot taxes, and this letter was a long letter prepared to say thanks to the town of Homer for, I remember the first two months I was here and I came up and asked for the pilot taxes to be waived. The council didn't like it too bit, but I'm very proud to say thanks to the mayor and the council for giving me a chance. We're now in the red and back into the green. We, I don't know if everybody knows, I'm sure you do know, that we had misappropriation fund of over $400,000. But now, all our accounts payable, they're up to date, and we do have money in the bank. I shouldn't have said that. We have something now, but we do have some cutbacks coming, so we're still deemed as trouble, and I have been told by HUD office in New Orleans, that in the next three to six months, if we keep going like we're going, we're going to come off that troubling list. We're working hard to do it, and I've been told we're going to come off the troubling list, so that puts us in good standing with HUD. That's our main goal right there. And to kind of sum the rest of it, our things that we might need right now from the town, if you look on the back page, we're not asking a whole lot, we're just asking if we could use the ice machine this summer to get some ice. The maintenance guys work pretty hard over there, and they just wanted to know that they get some ice. And really, that's all, we're just asking the town to be patient with us. We do have some cutbacks coming, so we have all good intentions to pay our pilot taxes from now to the future, but if we do get a major cutback, I will let you know, and at that time, ask for a little help. But until that time, I want to present the town with a check for $13,656.10. Thanks to the county.
We appreciate those visits, this article, we come back any month you like. Thank you so much. Going back to the next page. Okay, D, adoption of resolution 13-002 for Walter Young, water supervisor. It's a resolution that Mr. Young can explain better than we can. You come forth at this time.
Those were the orders for wastewater treatment plant out and, you know, and the book out. The facility that wastewater treatment plant is LPDES permit number, and we go on that, the design flow limit in gallons of data is 1.34 times point nine, which equals out to 1.21, which is a good, is a good rate of flow. And design BOD, which is the biochemical oxygen demand, which is treated to assist elements in water, to make sure that the water does, you know, we have to send a report every month to ocean everybody, and they test everything, make sure that everything is up to par, so that the town won't get the audit report that we have to put all the time. But as of right now, Mario Popadopos has a plan, and this is his report, they don't speak it on, he should be up here. An age of wastewater treatment plant facility is 7,000,000 years old, and total point fat rate is a 2.5 times seven, which makes that seven, seven, ten, eight, fifteen. And this list says, listed normal time in the year, there was an overflow bypass or unpermitted discharge of untreated or uncompletely treated wastewater due to every way. It equals out to 1.25, and that's once, and it goes on down, said that listed normal time in the last year, there was an overflow bypass or unpermitted discharge or untreated or uncompletely treated wastewater due to equipment failure, either the treatment plant or due to pumping problem in the collection system. This is L, zero point seven. And it said, listed person was pumping, naming title for reporting overflow bypasses or unpermitted discharge to the state or federal authority for sewer plant, Carl Jones for collection system, Walter Young.
So, are there any deficiencies in this report?
Yes.
Walter, would you have decided for any, did you invite my lawyer on?
Yeah, but it's not on this report right here. We got, we got, we got a report.
Any pending files?
If they don't get resolved, go back to 2012, 11, 2012, and up to this year.
And after that, we probably have to roll over here and ask the rest of the questions to the city attorney, but we are currently receiving courts and we're checking on the plan. If anything is not in compliance, we are seeking legal advice.
Mr. Popadopos taking care of the plan like he's supposed to.
No, sir.
That's, that's the problem with my office.
Yes, no, sir, he's not.
He's still a problem.
It's still a problem.
Mayor, did he report to why he's not here? Do you know why he's not here? It's like Mrs. Young said, he needs to be on, given this report.
No, he didn't report, he's not here. But Attorney Patullo can answer that, questions? I thank you, Mr. Young. This is a resolution that requires that we pass. Repetitive, resolution 13-002 is an environmental audit that we require to pass for our wastewater treatment plant. It has been submitted, so we pass this resolution to stay in compliance. We have a motion.
We have to pass it to stay in compliance.
This requirement, to have a wastewater treatment plant, we have to pass it. We already had a motion, we second, Ms. Jenkins.
Councilwoman I, 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 I second.
Moved by Councilwoman Wade, second by Councilwoman Jenkins, all in favor, state by saying aye. Any opposed? So, resolution 13-002 is passed. Can we submit Mr. Popadopos' letter to?
We're in the process.
We're in the process of contacting him, the guardians, letters from the sheriff's committee. We can be prepared, the council. Item C, adoption of orders 13-9005, Mr. Sheffield.
Again, this is a restructure, refunding of prior bonds issued by the town. One was issued in 1996, and the other bonds were issued in 2009. Obviously, interest rates were higher back then, we're refunding the We're refunding those bonds at lower interest rates. We've got a buyer for the bonds at three point five percent interest rate, which, that's basically cutting the interest rate that we're currently paying almost a half, in roughly approximately six percent interest rate on those bonds now. This will allow the town, actually, and we were talking about the water system and the enterprise water fund, will realize savings of approximately a hundred and twenty thousand over the remaining likely bonds by the end of this. And tonight, we're adopting, this is the final adoption of bond ordinance, we're set to close in our about April twenty-fifth.
Okay. Here are any questions, council, about ordinance thirteen nine zero five, Mr. Shafter spoke about, refinancing all bonds from a six point interest rate down to a three point two five, possibly saving the town a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in duration of funds? If you all make that, you'll make that motion, second. Motion made by Councilwoman Sanford, second by Councilwoman Wade, all in favor, state by saying aye. Any opposed? So that motion passes. And item B, even on the table, until.
Right, this is what, what, I think most of you hear about the notice intention to issue that the state, the Department of Environmental Quality Bonds, that's mainly to do the sewer system and the water, the water system. But the DEQ has not been final approval at that moment, but we're gonna get approval, but they were requesting some additional information, and we originally anticipated adopting that bond ordinance, so we proceed with that transaction tonight, since they haven't gotten final approval, we need to postpone that. We've already introduced it, we'll just adopt hopefully next month.
Next month.
But we've gotten approval to stay on it, we've gotten all of the approvals except the final DEQ, we're in line. And by adopting the ordinance now, you know, without the final terms, we have to back amended and all that, so it's probably easier to.
Wait till May, okay. Well, that will be placed on the menu. Okay. Thank you so much for what you do for the town.
Thank you.
Thank you. On the vote, we're away with the, is that the thirteen zero three? If you can recall, we did this on March second special call meeting. But this time, we want to recall and recall our vote. I'll entertain a motion to do so at this time. Moved by Councilwoman Wade, second. Second by Councilwoman Sanford, all in favor, state by saying aye. Any opposed? So that motion passes. Next, we have public comments. If anyone have any public comments, we have the public comments, we have the mayor's report, and we will revisit.
My name's Matt Simmons, owner, operator, Gordon Service Center here in Homer, four oh one West Main Street, Homer, Louisiana. I'm here asking for some help from the council. I've asked the mayor a few occasions to help me with this, and I'm really not getting anywhere. My dad previously owned Gordon Service Center, we provided a service here in Homer for, how to do the math, it's probably close to fifty years. You know, those of y'all that have lived here know that I'm probably close, give or take a few. I am a certified good gear dealer, I provide tires to state contract price for the government agencies here, in the parish and the town. What I'm faced with is the same problem that a lot of small business owners like myself are faced with. We get a lot of money out of the books, and it's really hard to operate from month to month to keep the inventory that we have, you know, keep the overhead that you have, payroll that you have, everything that you've got going on to provide the service for the town, for the parish, for the citizens here in Homer, when people aren't paying properly. Mayor, my counsel, I'm not trying to throw anybody on the bus, I'm asking for some help. I've got in my hand a total of about five invoices, a total of fourteen hundred and three dollars and sixty-five cents, and these dates back to January, as far as January the thirtieth. I just need a little help. But that's all I'm asking for. I mean, as we all know, the economy's not what it needs to be, especially right here in the town of Homer. I want to continue doing business with y'all. I mean, there's no sense in taking our tax dollars elsewhere. I just brought a check up here for almost eight hundred dollars for my occupational license. I need some money.
You want some towns?
I want fourteen hundred and three dollars and sixty-five cents. I mean, it's April the fourth, Councilwoman Wade. These invoices are from February and January.
These are bills the town owes you.
Yes.
Town has to pay.
Yes, they're bills, I'm sorry if I didn't make myself clear.
Are you, this one?
These are invoices that the town does not pay, and I just, I have on numerous occasions, the mayor and Ms. Foster know, because they're the two that I've spoken with time after time after time, I've asked for help. Can y'all please just try to pay in an ample amount of time? I mean, forty-five days would be great. I don't think that's asking too much, everybody else pays thirty or less.
How important is this office?
It's just work that we've done on some of the police units, they've had, they've got some pretty ragged cars laying around here, and we just, we keep them pieced together. They, you know, town can't afford to buy new, new police units in this time, but all I'm asking for is them to get caught up on reveal, I don't mind doing the work. I understand money's tight for the town, just like it is for myself. It's, it's an ongoing problem for everybody, but.
Okay, the proper name of the call, the call is Lisa Foster in the morning. Have you done it?
Mayor, I've done it.
Can I, when was the last time you contacted the office about this?
Because I haven't spoken to you this year.
You know.
Unless it was in the early part of this year.
I've, I've talked to you right there in the parking lot of my business before about the same problem.
That was in two thousand eleven.
Lisa, I've talked to you several times about this, you know that, and I'm not trying to throw anybody on the bus, I'm not trying to start anything.
Not to say, my question was, when was the last time you contacted the office about this?
The last, the last time that they sent me a check, I'll have to go back and see when I deposited that, it was right before then. I came up here and picked it up, whatever the date of the check was.
And what date you sent this, some of these invoices?
January, they go back far as January the thirtieth.
Oh, this year.
This year?
Yes, ma'am. January thirtieth, January thirty-first.
Do you have P O's for these purchases?
Yes, ma'am. For.
Do you have P O's for them?
Every one. All of them. Yes, ma'am. I just don't think it's asking too much.
No, it's not.
I don't mind continuing to do the work, they've got a car down there that's broken out that I'm working on currently, and I'll, I'll continue to work on, all these guys have to walk.
We don't, I think we should pay our, you know, when our local business, I mean, we want to keep our fees in the town, so I think we should pay them.
Well, like I said, I'm.
Before being behind them.
Yes, sir.
Certainly, we're, we're, council and mayor should be intuitive to see what's, what's going on, not, not, I feel.
Like I said, I mean, I brought my occupational license of about eight hundred dollars up here on time, my water bill, I might have been late once or twice there, might have gone a lot, but, I mean, we've been here a long time. I mean, and hopefully, with, with everybody's help, we're gonna continue to be, but all I ask is if they just try to pay a little bit, a little bit faster, it sure would help us out a lot.
Okay, I'll ask you again, if you contact Lisa Foster, can I stay over in the morning?
Yes, ma'am.
No other comments, we go to the mayor's report?
Only the mayor's not here to comment, I sent in a request, we've been on the agenda at three hours, and I want to discuss.
You visited me, and I told you that we'd discuss in April the eighth.
Did you tell, did you tell them they will be discussing later? Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to turn to one of them.
Yes, sir.
I thought we had a law for, order the dog, a lot of loose dogs run around, all around the back there, now you have a hood down there, a lot of dead, ready, good kids.
Okay, can you come up, so I can give you your name and address?
I didn't, I didn't try to, as long as you were just in the town, I can't ever see you, I don't know no doubt how, boy.
Okay.
And I can't get off around the time, it's a lot of dogs loose down the way, I've been sitting with a forty kilo man, he bought, and I said, you got, they can't put a box down there, I didn't even box them since I've been down the way, they can't stall them. You got to leave twenty, twenty dollars something for you to box, but I don't have that, I don't have that money, I ain't no, I ain't no.
And I've never heard of that either. Listen, we don't have a policy, you have to leave twenty dollars using a box.
Well, as I said, for running a lot of times, you can't, you can't shoot them yourself as long as you can't shoot them on the town, because a lot of loose pit bulldogs loose down the way, my wife, my, uh, walk around the hall bar for helping her, she can get a lot of, a lot of loose dogs sometimes be chasing around.
What's your address again?
Mine, that's eighteen, eighteen line deal.
Okay. Will you speak with Mr. Walter Young on your way out, he's currently supervisor over.
I can't give you a number, you know, but I wouldn't be shooting down along that line like that.
Speak to Mr. Walter Young, right there on the last seat.
Well, I, I, I found it very real today.
And he'll be able to give you the contact, I'm Mr. Jackie Wilson. Mayor's report for I, for the council meeting. Next, we have our collections for January, February and March. Our January water collection was a hundred and ten thousand, fifty-seven dollars and twenty-four cents. February water collection's a hundred and four thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars and forty-one cent. And our March water collection's a hundred and one thousand, a hundred and thirteen dollars and sixty-two cents. Sales tax collection for January was a hundred and fourteen thousand, eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars. Month of February, sales tax collection was approximately eighty-one thousand dollars. And our Platte Parish School Board sales tax for March was approximately a hundred thousand dollars. Total property tax for January was sixty-seven thousand dollars, estimated, February estimation of thirty-six thousand dollars, and in March was an estimate of four thousand dollars. Also, slave for this weekend, two church, one church and the town Homer had scheduled Easter egg contest. I know the one on Sunday was rained out, I'm not sure if they held the one Saturday in John Michael Memorial Park. I don't know. But Carrick Baptist Church was gonna hold Easter egg contest there?
No, we did not have it.
We did not have it, okay. So both of them were rained out. So I guess we'll make preparations to hold those two for next year. Also, tomorrow, briefly, Mr. Young, you guys up there on our Clean City Contest tomorrow? Like the first, keep seeing, I hope you can give us a call there. This will be the third year in a row that the town of Homer has entered Louisiana's Clean City Contest, and the last few years, we've won our region. And so, we're gonna be judged tomorrow. In fact, the judges will be here for reception at one thirty tomorrow afternoon, and we'd like for as many of you as possible to come here and meet them. They'll be in the main auditorium there, and after that, we're gonna ride around, certain things that they have to see, they have to see our public buildings, the hospital, the sheriff's office, the courts, courthouse, the schools, and so our route is gonna be from city hall down to the sheriff's office, then up north main to the hospital, to the high school, and then on our way back, we're gonna come down south main by the fire station, and then we gotta go out visually to the cemetery, because they have to inspect the cemetery. So we're asking for everybody to kind of ship up and check out, and make sure that everything looks good tomorrow, and, and if you'd like to come down and meet the judges, the more people we have, the better, yes, for us, our weather's pretty. And if you notice, we planted some flowers out, we're gonna be, we've been kind of straightened up around the square a bit at fifth, and so, and if you had any comments, if you'd like to help, we get busybody. Thank you so much, and we'd like to thank the Public Works Department, Superintendent Young, Superintendent Wells, along with our crews from the detention center, Tim Iverson. Tim, stand up like that, I didn't put you on the spot, you're grateful for that.
Tim has really.
Stand up, Tim, we need to give you a hand clap, because you've really gone around the town and tried your hardest to make it look clean and place flowers, and we do appreciate all that you do. I didn't put you on the spot on purpose. And also, Alicia, I think Alicia and Tim are just getting back now from purchasing flowers to put, place, when they went out in the morning today. All right. Still have plans, we appreciate all your efforts to make the town of Homer look better. Thank y'all, thank all three of y'all. Seeing this is the day which I spoke about earlier, will be May third here at city hall following that Mayfield Park, spoke about the recreational meeting April the fourth, and the town of Homer is currently seeking volunteers for the historical and the main street committees. These are committees to make our town a better place to live, these committees to bring businesses here, have our, we have grant funding available for our main street. When I went to a historical grant committee meeting in New Orleans, our square was one of the squares that was a model for what a square should look like in town. And, and this meeting, I guess I should have let you speak on this instead, you can go on and do more about historical and mainstream committees. We're gonna develop these committees to make the town of Homer live up to its potential. We have a lot of historic buildings here, they need to be on the register, and architect and things that I'm learning about as I'm being mayor, so if any volunteers know about some nice historical things of Homer, would like to volunteer and be on this committee, Alicia Mitchell in the back, please raise your hand, is taking names and applications if you want, would like to be on this committee, also, you can contact Mr. Gene Carter, if anybody would like to be on this committee. No further business. At this time, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. I would say, Sanford first, and six seconds. Thank you.